I call this meeting of the Northeast Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The Board will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code Section 551.071, private consultation with the Board's attorney, 551.072, discussing purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, 551.074, to discuss personnel or to hear complaints against personnel, and the time is 5:30. The Board will now reconvene into open session. The time is 6:43. On behalf of the trustees, I would like to welcome you to this evening's meeting of the Northeast Independent School Board. This is a business meeting of the Board held in public. We appreciate your attendance and request your respectful attention. We welcome your comments during the matters from the floor section of the agenda. If you signed up to address a specific action, agenda item, you will be called at that time. Finally, I would like to remind you that it is the mission of Northeast to challenge and encourage each student to achieve and demonstrate academic excellence, technical skills, and responsible citizenship. Item five, invocation and pledge of allegiance. Is that you, David?
Please prepare yourself in the manner in which you're accustomed. Please keep our graduates safe as they move on to the next stage of their lives. Congratulations to all of those that made that wonderful milestone. We've all been given a strong desire to do good, to be honest, to serve others, and to faithfully fulfill the obligations to our neighbors. Help us to do good. Help us to be honest and ethical in all our dealings. Help us to serve others, and help us to faithfully fulfill our obligations to our neighbors, our community, and the larger world. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and
Item six, matters from executive session. A personnel including but not limited to administrative appointments pursuant to Government Code Section 551.074. One, possible action regarding routine personnel, including but not limited to administrative appointments. Do I have a motion to approve as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Mister, thank you, Mr. Hasso. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item two, Executive Director of Campus Administration. Do I have a motion to approve as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Layous. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item three, introductions. Dr. Micah.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce the new Executive Director of Campus Administration will be Dr. Brent Brummett. At a, at a future meeting, we'll bring, you guys all know Dr. Brummett, of course, he's the Executive Director of Student Support Services, but we'll bring him in the future so that, to introduce him in that new role.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item B, possible action regarding purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property pursuant to Government Code Section 551.072. One, possible action regarding future CTE facility.
So as you will recall, we discussed with you about the purchase of a future, future CTE facility for a, a new program that we are planning. And so tonight, we come to you, Gary is here, correct, Mr. Clary? If there are any questions, but I do want you to know that we did take it to SEABACK. I see Ms. Ford is sitting there, who serves on SEABACK. When we explained to the SEABACK Committee regarding it, Mr. Jarrett, myself, and Mr. Peterson were all there to explain to SEABACK what we were planning to do. In fact, one of the gentlemen, Ms. Ford, do you remember who it was, said, "We have to stop and look at the financing first because we were already getting a vote on it."
That was Dale.
Dale. And so, but once, once we went through it, we do have the, the funds and the contingency to afford it. It is a very unique program that we'll be discussing with you in the near future, but SEABACK did approve it with an 11-0 vote that evening. So they're very excited about the potential of it. So tonight, we're just asking you for a vote to approve the purchase of that facility.
Okay. Do I have any questions or discussion regarding that?
I just want to make sure that it's clear that this money is coming from the bond contingency and it is not coming from some other source within the district.
Correct. It is coming from the bond contingency, Mr. Byer. This is money that was in the, in the 2015 bond, and again, as we explained to SEABACK that evening, all of the projects are pretty much complete, and so this is in the contingency fund that we can use for other items.
Ms. Huey.
I think it's really important to note, too, that SEABACK has reviewed this, and the fact that we bring items like this to community and that we have their support, to me, means a lot, to hear that SEABACK has reviewed it. It carries a lot of weight.
Yeah, and, and I will tell you, that was, I presented to SEABACK before, but that was the first ask, and they're a great group. They really are, very passionate.
We asked a lot of questions.
They did, and that's, and that's the job, though, Ms. Ford. I mean, you guys should be asking us lots of questions. And so we were able to provide them with all of the answers, explain the vision. I think, as you all see, it's, it's, it's new, it's innovative, it's, it's looking forward, it's filling a very large need in San Antonio and outward, and so we'll, of course, bring that plan to you in the near future if you vote tonight to approve the purchase of that facility.
Okay. Mr. Hasso.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I just real quickly wanted to thank Ms. Ford, because I know she served for a while, and Ms. Williams and I served with her on SEABACK.
Thank you, ma'am.
And so, again, I, you know, I know you all come up once a year, but just, there's a lot of stuff that happens in between that annual update, and so my thanks to y'all for doing that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the future CTE facility?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkley. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Hasso. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item C, possible action regarding consultation with Board's attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 551.071. One, pending in or possible litigation, no action. Item seven, presentations. A budget study session number two. Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Micah, executive staff, and guests, tonight we bring you budget study session number two. Tonight, we'll be talking about debt service fund, the health plan, compensation, staffing, addition, additional allocation requests, and the general fund summary. And with that, I turn it over to Brian Moy, our Executive Director of Finance and Accounting, and Susie Lackhorn, our Director of Budgets.
Thank you, Dan. Madam President, Board members, executive staff, and guests, Dr. Micah, we are going to pick up where we left off last week, Monday. We were talking about, you know, I gave a little teaser on the debt service fund, we're going to dive into that first. Briefly go through our health plan. I mean, that is the biggest non-salary portion of our, you know, pay and benefits is the cost of health insurance, and we want to make sure that we explain all of our options there with you. We're going to show you some compensation options. We're going to discuss changes to campus staffing, our annual look at AARs, and then we'll just do a wrap-up. Okay. For the debt service fund, the thing that's quirky about the debt service fund is that you have to adopt a budget that is for our fiscal year, which is July 1 to June 30, but we set the INS tax rate to cover debt payments September through August. So those two don't always jive, but we're going to go through it. So the payments that we make in our fiscal year are going to come up to just under $126 million. 123.9 in on our tax-supported debt, and just under $2 million in interest payments on our qualified school construction bonds. However, we get about 94% of that back in federal revenue. That was part of the ARS stimulus. I mean, it wasn't just, we talked a lot about the, the old stimulus, and they also did stimulus in terms of, on the debt service side, so that it would spur on construction. And so we were able to take on $37 million worth of debt, basically interest-free. So that's, that's what this is. Now, the interest in sinking fund rate for the period of September to August will only require to cover about $118 million, just because the timing of payments between August of, August of '20 versus August of '21, there's a little bit of disparity. And second, the INS rate does not cover anything related to the QSCAPs. We make transfers in from the general fund to cover, you know, what we need for the QSCAPs. INS tax rate cannot be used for that. So when we left off last week, we were talking about, we had a discussion on golden pennies and the fact that there's a, an option for one more golden penny this summer. So the way that our debt load, our payments are structured over the next few years, you know, it looks like we can lower the INS rate to 30 and 1/2 cents, it's currently at 32, that's a reduction of 1 and 1/2 cents, and still have over $12 million available August 1 of 2021 to continue our program of prepaying principal early. So if we were, and we do do that, that would then more than offset if the Board were to decide to go after the fifth penny, because tax compression on the M&amp;O side will bring it down a penny and a half, we bring down the INS a penny and a half, we're down three pennies overall, and then we could possibly have, if you went that route, the golden penny. And what, that brings in millions of member of state funds also, because these are the matching state funds. Okay, so just a real brief summary of the debt service fund. We are running a deficit this year of about $8 million. That was planned. It was in the budget, because remember when we, because we have a difference between tax year, fiscal year, what you're seeing here is we made a large payment in August, that, some of that buy-down, that, and so that was taxes that were collected in a previous, in the 1819 year, spent in the 1920 year. So it, it added to expenditures without the correlating revenue. The revenue was in a prior year. We, we were fully anticipating this. This year, we're actually looking at a, an add to fund balance of close to $16 million. We had two different bond issues early in the fiscal year, and I was being real conservative when I did the budget in terms of how much was going to be needed in district contributions to, to these refunding transactions, to make them more palatable. We didn't need nearly as much as I thought we were, and so we're going to be able to add about $15 million down to fund balance. Okay, but again, that's a June 30 fund balance. So if you look at where we end, 1920, about 134 and 1/2 million, just under 17 million is the set aside, the transfers in from the general fund to eventually pay off the QSCAP principal. We've been doing this since 2011, have built it up to almost $17 million. The principal is due in 2027. And then the funds have to be there on June 30 to make the really large August 1 debt service payments. So net, we really have, after those reserves, a fund balance of about 48 million, and next year, that will go up to about 56, 57 million. A pretty healthy fund balance leaves us with, again, a lot of flexibility in our debt management program. It's just one more use. We're, you know, we've entered the world of variable rate debt, we entered the world of commercial paper, we're doing early buy-downs, we have a fund balance to, to be able to take advantage of additional district contributions on a future, you know, refunding transaction if it, you know, if it makes the end result of that transaction better for our taxpayers. So I'm, I'm really happy with where we are in the debt service fund right now. And I'm going to, that's it on the debt service fund unless someone has questions specific to that, or I'll move on to health insurance. All right, great. As you're aware, we are a self-funded health plan. We pay all of the claims. I have a card in my wallet that says Blue Cross Blue Shield, but that is just the third-party administrator. We utilize their networks, but we have a lot of, again, flexibility in how we operate the plan, and we pay the claims directly. Just a quick update on the COVID, like many, many, many different insurers did and employers did, we decided early on to cover the cost of any COVID testing, COVID treatment, and expanded telehealth. So there are no COVID-related copays or deductibles, coinsurance for any of our employees or their dependents. And when we looked, we're, we're, the specific granular detail of spending by all those medical codes, it takes a long time to get summarized and back to us, but through middle of April, there was, I mean, there really was hardly anything related. I think we just have a lot of folks who just stayed home. Okay, so in terms of numbers, we currently, and you see there, under current 2020, four rows down, it says 6638. That is how many employees participate in our health plan. That's 74%, so three out of four of our employees join our health plan, and a lot that don't are, we have a lot of like retirees who come back and be bus drivers or stuff like that, and they don't participate, but a lot, a big chunk of our active members are in our plan. We saw an increase of 65 employees, plan year 20 over 19, and a few more dependents on average. So we have about 100 more people on the plan than last year. Now, this is the plan, I seem to get all the mixed up years. So just like the debt service has two different years we worry about, our health plan runs on a calendar year. So any change that we decide we're going to make becomes effective January 1. So any cost increases, that would, that would hit our budget only halfway into the year. So this, what you're looking at right here is plan year 18 versus plan year 19, because obviously we're still in the middle of plan year 20. So medical claims increased 6.3%, about $3 million. Pharmacy claims increased just about $2 million, but 11%. So an overall increase, a little under $5 million or 7%. And this is interesting, for years, you know, all we've been hearing is that all, everything related to healthcare, double-digit inflation, double-digit annual inflation, very large annual inflation, but we have been fighting year after year to mitigate that inflation. You know, so we get rid of the HMO to make our plan better. We add the high deductible plan. We change our pharmacy structure, adding more levels depending on the more, I don't want to say elaborate, the, the more expensive drugs, or the ones that you, we really are emphasizing doctors do a, you know, please do a choice down to generic incentivizing. And through all of that, we've managed to keep the inflation in check, but the last couple of years, we haven't really done many plan changes, and you can see that for, this is now on a fiscal year basis, sorry, meant to mention that. Our, our costs went up, we got a double-digit inflation year between 18 and 19, and it looks like it's going to tweak up a little bit again in 2020.
He was talking about prescription costs and how much it went. Our spend on prescription every year is around 25% of our total spend, and that's usually maybe six basis points more than we, than I guess the normal trends are. Usually it should be like 17, 18%. So we're trying to work with that, but, you know, prescription costs have really been running expensive, as he was saying. But now, with that, though, we're one of the only districts in this city, I know for sure, and in the state, that still has a 90-10 plan. So we still have that benefit for our employees. So our premium costs for, prescription costs have been going up, but we still have a 90-10, so that kind of helps out the employees. Just wanted to throw that in.
And this is pharmacy costs going up even after we got almost, you could almost call it a bidding war between Walgreens and CVS when we narrowed our pharmacy network, and we're, and that was good for a year or so, but, I mean, I don't want to be the, you know, conspiracy theory guy, but Big Pharma's going to come get to us, you know, eventually, and it looks like, and it looks like they are. So with the, our consultants showing another increase in inflation to, to medical costs and pharmacy costs for next year, if we were to do nothing to the plan for next year, we would likely run a deficit in the plan year of 2021 of about $7 million. So we wanted to bring forth some options to address that. So we're going to go over some plan changes, and then we've got a couple of options on changing premiums. The first option is the district eats about $3 million, and we pass on to the employees about $900,000, basically adding $4 million to the plan, 75% on the district, 25% on the employees. The section op, option is, the district eats all $4 million, and the employees don't have to go up on their premiums.
I'm going to interrupt you. That has been historically what we've done, correct?
Correct, and I'm going to come to that in about two or three slots.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Okay, so here's what we're proposing in terms of plan changes, looking at changing deductibles and out-of-pocket maxes on both the low and the high PPO plan. No change right now to the high deductible plan. That plan is still just in its first few years, you know, we want to let it get settled, and, but we are looking at making changes to the low and the high out-of-pockets. This will save the district, or the plan, about $3 million. And here's what you were talking about. So the going, this is five years. 2016, we did not provide any additional funds to the plan. 2017, only, so 20, I'm sorry, that, 2017 is incorrect, that's, should say NEISD and employee increase. 2018 was NEISD only, and then we've done nothing in terms of extra funding for the plan in 19 or 20. So in the last five years, there's been one increase to employees. So here's option one, which is the 75% of the extra funding to the plan comes from the district, 25% from the employee. You can see what the change in premiums would be, and just to let you know, so that's anywhere from $5 to $30 a month. But 60, if everyone stays on the same plan that they're on now, 62% of our employees under this option would see an increase of $10 a month or less. Another 12% would see a $15 increase, 20% would see a $20 increase, and less than 6% of the participating employees would see the increase of either $25 or $30 a month. So the vast majority of our employees, you know, 74% would be $15 or less. So here we go on, if we went with option one, on a fiscal year basis and a plan year basis, so obviously on a, on the fiscal year, since we would, we will only have half of the plan year, the increase to premiums on that second and third line is $2 million, where for the plan year, it's $4 million. And then we make one and 1/2 million worth of plan changes for half a year, if you look at on a plan year basis, $3 million. And we can then take a, what would be potentially a $7 million deficit for the plan year and get it to break even. And obviously, option two, a bunch of zeros down the right side, except for the district contribution, because we wouldn't be increasing any rates. And we would come to the same result at the end of the plan year 21. It would, it would bring us to break even. Any questions on anything related to health before I do make a quick couple of comments on dental? So we've changed to a new dental plan, a better dental plan, back in 2018, and for some employees, their dental costs actually went down in 2018. And just to let you know, this plan is 100% employee-funded, always has been, assuming, I don't know, and we do not anticipate making that change. But since seeing as we haven't had a rate increase in this for several years, we're looking at making a very small tweak to what is called the high plan of the two available dental plans, anywhere from $2 to $7 a month. Okay. And if there are no more questions, then you get to quit listening to me talk, and I will pass the presentation over to Susie Lackhorn.
I did have one quick question.
Yes.
The, the deductible changes and the out-of-pocket change, that, that will happen regardless of what option.
That is our recommendation right now, yes. It is the biggest, you know, you either have to change the premium side or you have to change the, the plan side.
Sure.
And, I mean, will this, we say changing the plan. Well, you change an out-of-pocket max, you change a deductible, is that more on the employee? Yes. But what you're, what you're doing is, you're putting more of the onus on to the people who are using it most, and if you change just premiums, everybody goes up.
Right.
If someone who isn't utilizing the plan goes to the doctor once a year and does nothing else, by changing out-of-pocket maxes and premiums, you're not hurting that big group of employees.
And do we, do we have any, do we have any data or anything that shows like what percentage of people are meeting that out-of-pocket max or the?
Yet, we can, we can bring that to you, but I do not have it at this meeting.
Anything else, sir?
Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Micah, executive staff, and guests. We're going to get things rolling, talking about compensation. Let's first take a look at our 10-year history. So over the last 10 years, these are the various combinations and methods we have used to increase pay for our employees. As you can see, only two years we were unable to do anything. Those were two pretty tough years, for those of you who were around. We also like to show you Texas CPI, the Consumer Price Index, to give you an idea of what inflation is trending, so you can get a feel for how pay increases are trending along with what our employees are having to buy for their groceries and general costs and such. Big disclaimer on 1920 CPI, we grabbed it through February because COVID-19 is going to wreak havoc on CPI, just as I'm sure you can imagine. So we're just gonna, we're going to pretend like the year stopped in February for now and, and go from there. But as you can see, this is our history. Last week, Dr. Micah talked about Commissioner Morath mentioning not adding ongoing costs to the budget. Very strong recommendation from the Commissioner. So one way we can do a pay compensation method for employees without obligating the district on an ongoing basis would be to provide a retention. And so a retention is paid out twice a year. So whatever the total amount is, it's cut in half, and you get half at the end of the first semester and half at the end of the second semester. You have to be hired before a certain date to qualify, and you have to finish the semester in order to get the payment. So if you leave us in October, we won't pay you in December at the end of the semester. So to give you some cost estimates, a 1% retention would cost roughly $3.9 million, and a 2% would cost 7.8. A teacher would see at 1% roughly $567 in total, spread over those two payments, and at 2%, it would be about $1,133. On the other side of compensation is always the health insurance side that Mr. Moy talked about. So to give you an idea of how we compare with So to give you an idea of how we compare with our Bear County neighbors, on health insurance, the district has historically contributed a great deal more than the rest of Bear County. This is a five-year history, and you can see in 2014, we started out contributing 4,400 per employee, and by 2019, we're at 53-52. That's a 21.6% increase. So you can see the district's commitment over the years of even when you couldn't provide a raise, trying to contribute to the health insurance to keep those costs down for our employees. When you look at the average of the Bear County ISDs, they started out at 34-69 back in 2014, and then by 2019, they were at 4,058, a 17% increase. And if you look at 2019, we're about $1,300 more per employee than the average in Bear County. That's a 31% increase over them. So let's get a little bit deeper into the detail on how we compare to them with plans. Every year, I get to spend time looking at other districts and the plans they have. It's not always easy to find a plan that matches our plans real well. So some of these districts have really moved off. I think Mr. Villarreal was saying that we're the only one that does a 90-10 plan, and so some of them have gone to really restrictive plans where you can only go to the Baptist Health System or, you know, something like that. So it's getting harder and harder to find comparable plans. A lot of our districts here in San, in the Bear County use TRS active care, and so their rates are partially, completely determined, partially, completely. They are in total determined by TRS, and then their contribution offsets that to get the employees' share. And so I've averaged those districts, but they don't have the flexibility that we do having a self-funded plan and, and some of the changes that we can make, you know, changing the deductible and the out-of-pocket max. So if you look, these were the most comparable plans that I could find. There were some plans with other districts that might have been more affordable, but their plan, like I said, was restrictive and couldn't really compare with what we were offering our employees. Deductible and out-of-pockets, all kinda run in a similar kinda range there, and so do the co-pays. When you get down to the monthly premiums, though, you can see that it's really a better bargain here. If you're on the employee only, you're paying $107 here. Everybody else is, uh, everybody but one is over 200 at this point in time, and TRS is at 181 on average. Then, as we keep going, each step gets a little bit more expensive with Northeast, but it gets a lot more expensive at the other districts. If you look at employee family, we're paying $440 a month, if you're on that plan, but every other peer is either double or triple. So it's a considerable increase, um, working in those other districts. So let's take a look at how that combines with pay. We pulled 1920 average teacher pay. So that's what submitted for PME's is what each district's average pay was for these four peers. That's that annual base pay in the very top. So that's the annual average pay for a teacher at those districts. Calculating that on a monthly basis, the district's at 48-10, peer A's at just over 5,000, B and C are both in the 4,700s, and then peer D's at 5,000. So peer A, on a monthly basis, is paying nearly $200 more per month for this, for an average teacher, and peer D's at 190 more per month. B and C are pretty close to us. Once you start backing off these premiums, though, things start to look a little different. So if you're on the employee-only plan with Northeast, you're paying $107 a month, so your net pay's 4703. At peer A, you're paying $255 a month, and so your net pay's 4753. You went from having a base pay of being nearly $200 more per month to having a net pay that's only $50 more per month. And as soon as you get down into the other plans, employee child, there's nobody bringing home more net pay than Northeast. And so it very quickly escalates even more so, once you get into those other plans like we saw in the premiums. When you move down to employee family, then it's $370 a month for peer A here on employee family, 900, over 900 in peer B and peer C when you're on employee family. When you multiply that by 12, it's a lot of money for, for a teacher and a family. So as you can see, health insurance plays a huge part of compensation. It really can drastically change the way your check looks on a monthly basis.
And Suzy?
Yeah.
If I can interject. The differences also, you gotta remember, is the difference in co-pays. So even though some of these districts at the employee-only might be taking home a little bit more per month, their co-pays on their insurance side, like office visits, emergency care, urgent care, their deductibles are a little higher, so that might be eaten up by that. So I just wanted to throw that in.
Very good point. All right. Any questions on the basic compensation framework?
And Brian, just to make sure I'm, I'm accurate, I know that you showed 74% of our employees are on our health insurance, but when it comes to teachers, I believe that's like 81.
81, 82% of our, of our teachers.
Correct.
Like I said, the, the ones that tend to not be on our plan are, uh, a lot of the bus drivers and some of our school nutrition, but, but of our salaried staff, it is definitely into the 80s. Administrators are even higher than the teachers.
And if you all will remember, uh, convocation in August leadership, I spent a great deal of time really talking about this to our employees, which I almost think, I wonder if that's not why we saw a little increase in, in the number of people on the plan. But if you'll recall some of those stories, um, you know, they switched their spouse that's working in a neighboring, in a peer district, and, uh, they were making $500 more a month, shifting their spouse onto our plan. So, cause that 74 with all employees is a, it's not misleading, but it's, when you look at the, the teachers, right, that's 81% of them are actually on, or 82.
And I'm one of those employees whose spouse is on our plan because he works in a TRS active care district, just so you know. All right. Anything else?
Did anybody have any questions about that before? Oh, Ms. Zini.
Yeah, I know we review the insurance on a very regular basis, but I really appreciate the reminder, although we just reviewed it just really just a few months ago, too, the reminder of, of the way the district has stepped up. So I really appreciate that, that we're able to do that for our teachers. That's, that's really important, and for all of our employees. So thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right, so let's talk about general fund expenditures. Next year, um, we need to plan for staffing, obviously, even though there are a lot of questions about next year, we're still, um, looking to staff at the level we would expect to staff at without COVID-19, you know, changing things too drastically. We would reduce teaching FTEs by 37 and a half and save $2.5 million. This is primarily due to the fact of enrollment changes. 1920's enrollment was 300 students less than what we expected it to be, and then 2021's enrollment is expected to be 300 students less than 1920. So it's really an adjustment for 600 students. At the elementary level, we'd cut 22 teaching FTEs. Now again, that's not saying goodbye to any people. We have enough people who retire and leave that, that this would just happen naturally. We wouldn't be, um, asking anybody to go. At the beginning of each year, you, there's no way to get it perfect, that you would know how many kids are gonna show up in that grade level at that campus. And at the elementary level, given that we have to do waivers for anything above 22 to 1, we have a contingency built into the budget so that if we get a surprise influx at a particular place and we need to hire an extra teacher because the classroom sizes are too high, we have a contingency built into the budget to be able to fund those hires in the fall. So no need to panic if, if we need to do that. At the middle school, we're looking at four FTEs, and high schools, 11 and a half. And again, most of this is related to the change in enrollment. For non-teaching professionals, we're looking to add four FTEs at a cost of $400,000. We're actually gonna reduce four FTEs at the elementary level. We had assistant principals at some campuses, they were staffed at one and a half, and, and because of enrollment changes and things, we'll move them down to one. So no campus lost, it was eight campuses losing half of an assistant principal. The high school level, we're actually gonna have to add eight FTEs. Seven of those are CCMR specialists. CCMR stands for College Career Military Readiness. This was something added by HB3. One of those many things we told you about last year that we needed to learn more about. To meet those program requirements for HB3, we feel like these specialists will help us accomplish the goals that HB3 set for that. And so, um, that staff will be added at each of the high schools, and we're also adding a special education professional. So that explains our non-teaching professional FTE change. At the campus assistant level, we'll cut seven FTEs, saving $200,000. At elementary, that'll be five. We'll actually add some pre-K assistance, and that'll be offset by reductions in general assistance and special ed assistance. Again, with the enrollment decline, some of those general assistants aren't needed at the same level as they were before, and we'll have a two FTE reduction at the middle school.
And, and the staffing committee meets, as soon as school starts, we meet every day, uh, the associates and assistants, superintendents, and also with HR and different departments, and we look at the daily attendance and see where the kids are and might not be. So for the first month of the school year, we meet daily, uh, to make sure that we're staffing our, our schools appropriately. So that's what, uh, Suzy alluded to, that there's some contingency money in case we do need it, then we are able to hire or move teachers around.
And one other thing, is it noted that there would be some, uh, special ed assistant reductions? That's not a blanket, oh, well, this is a ratio of here to here. That is specific, working with the special education department on the students in each of the schools and their IEPs, their needs. If a child moves on from an instructional setting that requires a full-time assistant to one that doesn't, then we pull back that allocation, but just like with teachers, that $3 million contingency in the fall, a lot of that does go back to, uh, adding special ed positions when new students enroll, get brand-new IEPs, and we find out that they need the extra assistance.
Yes, we'll use that same contingency for assistance, general, special ed, as things, you know, adjust, cause we wanna be flexible and provide the kids what we need, so that contingency really provides us that flexibility to do that whenever we see what the actual enrollments look like and what special services our students require.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not used to looking over here, so I have to.
And on, well, two slides before that, yes, that slide.
Yes.
Right there. So, so it looks like that's almost pretty much a wash, just in case you have to use that contingency because you've saved like 2.5 million, but...
We don't typically spend that whole 3 million. It's really there in case we need it, um, in, in case more kids than expected show up. So it, it would be a wash, but it's really, um, Mr. Villarreal says no every time anybody asks for something, so, um, I'm just...
I say may, I say maybe. I don't say no.
Yeah, and Ms. Williams, um, we've, we've traditionally budgeted, um, between $2 and $3 million in contingency each year in order, because you just don't know when, um, as things, you know, students move around and, and populations change. This year's, um, could be a potentially even more of a challenge, because, um, we have no idea the demographic changes that have gone on through COVID-19. You know, we, we already know some people have moved back with their parents because they couldn't afford it. We know some folks have moved from apartments, uh, from one area of town to a different area of town to, to try to save money. So we're trying, um, to anticipate some of that, uh, which is why the contingency is at the level that it's at, is in order for us to respond very quickly in a manner to meet the needs of our student populations wherever they are in the district. But we always begin first with looking at staffing at schools where they're overstaffed and trying to shift those first to areas of need before we start spending that $3 million.
And if we do spend it, a lot of times it means that we have more kids than we expected, which translates to we have more revenue than we expected, too. So it helps offset the cost of actually spending the contingency?
So, so kinda speaking of that, on the same slide, it says, um, the next two bullets, 1920 enrollment was 300 students fewer than projected, and then 2021 is projected to be 300 students fewer, so that's 600, a loss of 600.
Mm-hmm. Two years. Yes.
Students in two years.
Yeah, so on, on that enrollment, it's, it's very interesting. So for, for many of you, you, you know where the enrollment loss was happening was elementary. It's now moved up to high school. So that's where we saw the loss this year, was at high school. That's the first time that we've seen, uh, a loss at that level. And so, as you know, performance and planning tracks us very carefully, and we are constantly looking at trends, pockets, where that, that is happening, and then trying to figure out the why behind it is, is the million-dollar question. And so, um, so that's, that's what's happening, is it's shifted. In fact, elementary grew this year, correct, like by 400 and something kids. We actually saw an enrollment growth more than what we anticipated, but high school was down a little bit.
Thank you.
So Dr. Micah, on this slide, if you'll remind me, um, the loss that we had this year with our enrollment. We didn't have to release any of our staff. We were able to place them in other places, or did it, did we end up having to, did we not have a spot for someone that was hired in anticipation?
No.
Okay.
We, we were able, everybody continued to, to be employed. We didn't have to do a ref. We didn't have to do a reduction in force.
Okay.
And so, no, everybody was, was placed. In fact, based on some needs throughout, we had to spend a little bit of contingency money in order to make, make sure that we met the needs of the students at the areas that they were at.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Are we ready to talk about additional allocation requests? All right. So each year, we roll out staffing allocations and base allocations to our campuses and departments, you know, telling them how much their, their base operating budget will be for the next year. If they have needs that are not already included in those budgets, then we give them an avenue to request additional funds. They're called additional allocation requests. And, um, they submit it, it goes through an approval process, executive staff then prioritizes them, and then eventually, a handful will make them into, make it into the budget for the next year. And here is a preliminary look at what we're looking to have to add to next year's budget. It totals approximately $800,000, and $350,000 of that will be a one-time cost, so it's nice that it'll go away in the next year. Let's look at the, a little bit more detail. In business services, we have a total of $542,000. $310,000 of this will be for an expected spike in unemployment claims, thanks to the high unemployment rates due to COVID-19. This is our high-end estimate, and so we'll only charge what we need to charge. It, it just depends on how quickly the economy recovers. It depends on, you know, how quickly those people get off the unemployment rolls. So, um, we'll, we'll see how it goes, but we're estimating $310,000 will be enough to get us through it. We also expect to see an increase in property insurance premiums. That seems to happen quite regularly as you live in a place where it hails frequently. And we increase our square footage, as Mr. Moore reminded me, um, our bond program. When it makes additions, then we have to provide additional coverages for new square footage of you. So, moving on to instruction and campus administration, um, we're looking to add an FTE for a concessions manager who would oversee all the major concessions operations throughout the district and the sports. It's a very hard task, and, and we feel like this will help manage it. We're also looking to add, um, $55,000 for some second-grade testing related to gifted and talented. And another thing that occurs regularly is that UIL mandates increases in referee pay, so we have to pay whatever rate they set. And so you'll see this frequently, um, over the course of a decade, as they change rates, we've, we've got to meet their requirement. I grew up to a bunch of smaller ones. I grew up to a bunch of smaller ones altogether, but they include things like setting up the concessions manager, the setup costs for that, relatively smaller things that you don't want to stay here all night listening to me talk about additional allocation requests.
Mr. Jarrett, would you just brief the board very quickly on the gifted and talented second-grade COGAT component and why we're doing that?
Sure. If you recall, we had brought some data to you probably right before the winter break. And essentially what we saw was a decrease in number of students identified for GT. And in our effort to improve that is that first thing, you have to assess the students to see where they're at, because if you can get that safety net out there, then essentially those kiddos can be serviced appropriately. And so this COGAT testing is going to afford us the opportunity to identify more kids and then service them appropriately.
Because before that, it was more based on, it wasn't a universal test that we gave to all students. It was more on teacher recommendations and things like that. This is a universal screener now that will go to all second graders for us to try to identify students across the board rather than simply relying on, on, you know, opinions and things like that. Not to say that our teachers can't spot it, but sometimes giftedness is, is, it manifests itself in different ways, sometimes in behavior and not necessarily in academics. So this is our attempt to make certain, don't chuckle, I was in GT. And I may have been that behavior kiddo. But it's, it's our attempt to do a much better job at identifying all students, no matter what campus that they're in, to, in order to better meet their needs.
I know it was kind of funny, but sometimes they misbehave because they're bored. They've already, they feel they already mastered curriculum and they're just bored.
I may or may not identify with that statement.
Or they may have a lot to say to the friends that are surrounding them because they are out of work.
Right. I mean, again, it, it manifests itself in a lot of ways. And so what we want to do when we saw that is figure out a way in which we could do a better job as a district in identifying these students. And so, you know, $55,000 is a relatively minimal cost to hopefully identify more students through it. And so I know Mr. Jarrett and Roxanne worked very hard at, at this piece, so we're excited about our efforts, efforts there. And of course, we'll bring you the data back on what we find from it.
Good job.
A quick question about the concessions manager. What, is that somebody that's going to be over like middle school, high school, the stadiums, what, what, everything?
Dr. Newman's going to answer your question for you.
Mr. Byer, this, yes, this person will be coordinating the efforts at our stadiums as well as all of our other facilities for our middle school and high school events. We will still have Band Parent Association involved as well as other student organizations, and so this person will be able to manage that.
Yeah.
Can I just make a comment real quick about the CCMR counselor? Are they considered a counselor?
Specialist.
Specialist. I am so excited about this position. And I, I happen to know the CCMR specialist at Churchill because she was my students counselor. And I think in having that experience and seeing her help the kids navigate to what the next step looks like and what is important as far as testing and, and searching for scholarships and just looking for, looking at different avenues when, when they were trying to decide what to do after high school. It's exciting, and I think that all of our campuses are going to benefit tremendously from having a specialist. And I'm just incredibly excited, incredibly excited. Can't say enough about it.
I think the great thing about that too is she is so, the person you're talking about, she is so excited about it. So when you add that on top of, of what this is offering our students, it's just, she just, she just can't wait. So, yeah, great point. Yeah, thanks, Andy.
Anything else? All right. So let's, let's start recapping the general fund. So we've talked about a lot of big pieces now. We've got a few more pieces to talk about, and then we'll summarize it and give you that high-level look that, that you're looking for. We do have some more new items for 2021. HB3 keeps coming back. One of the components was required reading academies. So K3 teachers and principals are required by HB3 to attend a reading academy before the 22, 23 school year. A few exceptions would be like the PE teacher at the elementary school doesn't have to do it, but, so we have got to provide that training. We've also talked about new summer programs. I believe in one of your COVID-19 updates earlier this year. We talked about a re-engagement and an enrichment camp to try to give our students an extra chance for learning and engagement this summer after spending so much time away from our campus. SB 12, Senate Bill 12 from the 2019 legislature, increased one of the rates we have to pay for TRS. It actually will in, keep increasing for several years to continue. So next year, we're going to see a little higher increase in TRS. And then we have a new concept that we've got to add to our budget for next year regarding our program allotments. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more detail before I start giving you cost estimates on all these things. I want you to, to get a feel for this. You've seen it, but I just want to walk you through it. The state funding model includes allotments for specific student populations. So you've heard us talk about this. You get it for state comp ed, special ed, different populations. And they require that a percentage of each of those allotments must be spent on specific type costs and tracked by the district. Some of those percentages are 55, some of them are set at 100. And if a district fails to spend enough in one year, then they've got to make it up over the next two years. Well, COVID-19 interrupted some of our spending in these allotments. There was tutoring we couldn't do because everybody was at home. And some of the requirements are you have to work directly with the students to do, to get credit for that spending. HB3 also created brand-new allotments. And we started the school year with not all the rules for those allotments. So meeting the spending requirements for those were a little difficult. And the new ones created were dyslexia, early education allotment, and the college career military readiness that we commonly refer to as CCMR. The early education allotment was meant to fund the second half of the day for pre-K. It also is where the reading academies are going to be included. But not knowing what was allowable in that allotment and getting going and having COVID-19 means that we want to plan to have extra costs next year in order to meet those spending requirements. Now, there's a chance that TEA may waive those requirements. They've come out and said, we're not committing to it at this time, but we're going to look at it later. Did I get that right, Dr. Micah?
Yeah. So what they're going to do is, at the end of the year, they're going to take a look across the state and say, how many people actually, this is kind of what it says, how many districts were actually able to make their spending requirements? Ooh, not very many, so well, we'll go ahead and waive that requirement. But they're not going to let us know that until at the end of the year. So we have to plan that we have to, but we may not have to.
The PEMS year.
Correct.
So when they say we're going to review the year-end reports and make a decision, they're talking about the PEMS submission that every school district does at the end of their fiscal year. And I believe they will be able to review those reports in February.
At 21.
Yes.
And February of '21 for all the fiscal year end '20. So we could find out in fiscal, I mean, if we don't take these actions to say, we better ramp up spending because there, I would rather ramp it up some and then have them come back and say, no, you don't have to meet it for 1920, so you don't have to increase future years to get a good three-year average, than find out at the end of February, oh, by the way, you're on the hook for an extra $2 million, and you only have four months now to spend it, three months to spend it.
And just as Suzie said, the frustrating part is, and if you'll recall, last year at this time, we're saying House Bill 3 has all these requirements, and we don't even know the rules. Some of these rules we didn't learn until January. So now we've got to make this spend, and then, oh, by the way, COVID comes in in, in March and that. So it's, it will be interesting to see over time what they decide to do.
I'm sorry, David wants to know, what is PEMS?
Ms. Williams, if you don't know, then.
It is the electronic reporting system for TRS, um, for TRS, for TEA. It is the Public Education Information Management System.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We submit lots of data through PEMS, so, and one of those is our annual financial results. All right. So let's summarize costs here. We walked through campus staffing changes. The net of all that would save us 2.3 million. Every year, we have more experienced teachers retiring, and you, we typically hire less experienced teachers to, to fill those. And so we expect that to save about $800,000. The AARs, the additional allocation requests that we walk through, were another $800,000. That rate increase for TRS would be another $300,000. The reading academies and that program allotment catch-up, those reading academies will apply to one of those allotments. And so together, those will be about 2.4 million. And again, we will wait and we'll find out what TEA makes a decision on that. The summer programs, another $900,000. And then since we're comparing 2019, 20 actuals, our projected forecast, to our projected expenditures for 2021, next year, if we're going to open normally and do all the things, we're going to have regular utility bills for the whole year. We're not going to have this great low-cost utility bill in April and May because of the closure. Fingers crossed. And so we'll need a return to our level of spending before COVID-19 in next year. So that would add $4 million when you're comparing next year to the current year. And then a few other items for a small amount of $200,000. So a net change between 1920's actuals and 2021's actuals of $5.5 million. So this is where it would break down at. We're projecting 1920 to be 550.1 million, and next year would be 555.00, nearly 7. Keep in mind, the 2021 forecast does not include any changes for compensation or health insurance yet. And last week, we talked a little bit about the CARES Act. So the CARES Act is going to be used by the state of Texas to supplant state revenue that we would normally receive. And so last week, we talked about approximately $11 million of revenue that we would normally get from the state of Texas is now going to come through a federal program through the CARES Act. We're eventually going to move $11 million worth of expenses into that same CARES Act fund, and it'll wash each other out. We don't have a lot of information about how we're going to have to do that. So we're going to learn some more information late next week. At the end of 2021, your net differential will be the same because you've moved out equal revenue and equal expenditures. But at this point in time, I can't tell you how much revenue is going to come out of which year and how much in expenditure is going to come out of which years. Because we, we've got to make sure we follow all the rules as, as we're supposed to. And this is all very new. So everything I'm showing you pretends like that $11 million isn't here because it'll be $11 million in revenue and $11 million in expenditures, and it won't change our bottom line. So just keep in mind, I'm, I'm giving you this big disclaimer because when we bring you the annual report for 2019, 20, it may look very different than the number I'm showing you now, and it's because of that CARES Act and us moving some of the funds over to that federal fund. Okay? I don't want y'all looking at our accounting director going, hey, Suzie said, and what's going on here? All right. So going out one more year, we'd have slight increases for TRS again. You know, we always build some inflation out. 21, 22 is pretty far out into the future. So plenty of disclaimers there. Again, this does not include compensation or health insurance adjustment or the effect of CARES Act. Let's take a look at what happens when we combine this with our revenue picture. Fund balance is a great way for you to see the health of the district. Since I'm going to throw revenue out there at you again, I want you to remember, this is the same slide as last week. We still have plenty of uncertainty around us. How many students will return? Will we get funding for distance learning? Will the economy continue to drag? Will it get better? You know, there was a good jobs report. Will it continue? Will we have to close again? And will the feds give us more money? These are great questions. And so that just gives you a picture of the things that, that we don't know. So when we're doing our forecasts, we're trying to give you the picture as if everything was fairly normal. So this is 1920's actual forecast, what we expect to finish the year at. We're thinking roughly $5 million will end the year at 3.1 months. Now, keep in mind that this does not include the effect of the CARES Act, so that could change. For 2021, if we don't include the fifth penny and we don't include any compensation change or health insurance adjustment, we would lose roughly $3 million, bringing us to three months of fund balance. 21, 22 also doesn't have any compensation change. We'd lose $6 million and end up at 2.8 months. So now let's do another run grabbing that fifth penny. So if we do do the fifth penny, now this does not include compensation, health insurance, and again, the effects of the CARES Act. 2021 would then come in at $4.5 million because remember, that extra penny gives us both property taxes and state revenue. So we went from having a $3 million loss to having about $4.5 million net. So our fund balance would stay roughly at 3.1 months. And then in 21, 22, we would have a positive of 1.4 million, growing fund balance to 3.2 months. So now let's take this same example and throw in some compensation. All right? If, if, if we were to do a 2% retention and option one of health. Now, option one of health was the 75, 25 share of the increase. So 2021 would then be at a loss of 4.8 million and fund, and fund balance at 2.9 months. 21, 22, and again, 21, 22 has a legislative session before it. So keep in mind that that could have a dramatic impact. And keep in mind, you know, that the students have to return for these numbers to be realistic. So 21, 22 would be a $1.3 million loss, taking us to 2.9 months. All right. One more iteration. This would be having the fifth penny, 2% retention, and option two of health, which is where the district covered the entire increase. So we'd have a $5.3 million loss in 2021, giving us 2.9 months of fund balance. 21, 22 would be a 2.4 with 2.8 months of fund balance. There's one factor that I'm definitely not including that we're going to start working on soon, is a cost containment program for 2021. Given our concern with the legislative outlook for '21 and given that the state's budget seems to have very big concerns for its impact with the economy, we will start a cost containment program in 2021 and find ways to save some money. We have done this multiple times over the years, been pretty successful at it. We'll tackle it from different ways, but until we have a plan in place, until we start seeing some of those savings, we don't want to build in an expectation until we know exactly what's going to happen.
Will you toggle back to that previous slide, please? So 2%. Retention.
Yes.
So 2% retention and option one.
Where we're sharing the health increase with 75% district, 25% employee.
And then, you can go back to the other one, please.
This one?
So really, our fund balance is 2.9 whichever way we go. That's what I was trying to look at, right? Am I looking at?
She's right. Yes, ma'am. So a month is over $40 million of expenditures. So, it takes a pretty decent change for that to bump at even a tenth of a percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Does anyone have questions for Suzie or Brian? That's a lot.
This is a lot.
Well, and again, Mr. Moy, we're trying to stay around that three months or thereabouts. Is that, is that right?
That's always, that's always a $64,000 question.
Yeah, recommend.
When we set a, when we specifically set a fund balance policy, we set it as a goal to have enough fund balance, and I'm, in my mind, I'm talking about general fund and debt service fund combined, to maintain ourselves at an investment-grade rating. Now, we are on the high end of an investment-grade rating already. So, and, and I'm also looking at this from, you know, like I said, last, last week, you know, when we were, you know, 11 years ago, we're looking at 1.6 months of fund balance. I mean, we're still getting bonds sold, but it's better where we are now. But we don't set a specific, in policy, we do not set a specific number of months. There's a lot of agencies out there, like the Government Finance Officers Association and stuff, where they say, you know, at a minimum, you should have two. There used to be a part of Schools First that was a T E A calculated minimum fund balance. They've dumped that years ago. There is, there is no, there is no clear answer. And, but fund balance is there, in my mind, as a tool. So if we needed to use it, short-term, it's there.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Next week, we'll bring, we've really only been talking about actual expenditures throughout this process. So next week, we'll bring you what a budget for those expenditures will look like. Keep in mind that the budget is always significantly higher in expenditures than what we forecast. We budget very conservatively. So we budget for every employee to have been hired and working every single day. And when you have well over 8,000 employees, that's just not going to happen. So, we budget at that extreme level. We also budget that every department and every campus is going to spend all their operating funds. And so, that, that's not going to happen either. And so, the budget that you adopt will look different than the expenditure forecast we've shown you because of those things. But it's really important for you to see what the actuals are going to look like when you're making your decisions. And we budget at that really high-end, I don't want to say worst-case scenario because my definition of worst-case has changed in recent months. But it's, it's at the higher end of the spending spectrum. And so, but it's not what we're necessarily expecting. So we always like to show you both pieces, just, just for your knowledge there. So next week, we'll talk more about what the actual budget will look like. And we'll talk about compensation. And we'll actually talk about school nutrition, which we haven't discussed yet. So, I'm sure you'll, it's always one of my favorite discussions.
Right. And just so y'all know, in the school nutrition today, they surpassed 2 million meals served.
Woo-hoo. Fantastic. Okay, Brian and Suzie, great presentation. Thank you very much. And we look forward to seeing you next week, next Monday night. Item eight, board business. A possible action regarding 2020, 2022 Tasby advocacy agenda resolution. There was a resolution that we've done in the past that was the review and approval process to prevent an oversaturation of charter schools in particular geographic areas. I think this one might still be relevant. We've had, last year was about criminal background checks. I think, you know, we've kind of done that enough. And then, I don't remember what the other one was. But, you know, with everything that's going on right now, it's so hard to know what to even ask for. Right? I mean, I had a conversation with Deb Caldwell. Sandy and I have talked about it. We actually asked Tasby if the deadline of June 15th needed to really be met or if they were going to consider changing it, since everything is unknown. And they said they wanted to continue with the June 15th. So do you have any comments, Ms. Yen?
Shannon had asked me to, to look into the issue of the resolution status this year because of the unknowns. There had been discussions at Tasby and in the legislative committee and in other venues. We've had meetings, Zoom meetings for the last couple of months. We've met with the commissioner a couple of times, things like that. So we've had ongoing discussions, even to the extent of whether we needed to repeat LAC. And the majority of y'all attended LAC, so you know the intense work that goes into that. The thinking is, there's no such thing as a normal session anyway. And this one's going to be so far outside the norm. There's no way to know exactly where we're going to be. When you add in all the issues of COVID and the side effects of that, in addition, they're going to be looking at a freshman speaker in the House that right now, they don't even know where the votes are coming from for that. Redistricting will be on their plate. Can you imagine if they have to social distance on the House floor? Now, that might work in the Senate, but in the House, right now, they don't even know how they're going to handle it. Currently, Tasby's governmental relations, G R, can't even get into the Capitol on a normal basis because they have to plan so far ahead. So, the G R staff at Tasby's still been working extremely hard. I think it's important to remember that they have, that, that G R staff is amazing. They have over 100 years of experience in that office alone, just in that G R staff. So, my concern when I was reaching out to them for Shannon and for us is, how do we make sure that any changes that can come about, that we can't anticipate right now, might be met by the Tasby staff? How are our concerns and our needs going to be addressed and, and, and taken to the House and Senate? The head of G R, Grover Campbell, he said, when the situation warrants, they will reach out to us individually, personally, however. That's when we know what the situation is. So, they anticipate, right now, that the main things that they're going to keep on their agenda are the things that are the most critical to us right now, and that's vouchers, for one, which is, if you've already seen, I'm sure you've all already seen that, that the voucher advocates thinks that they have a chance now, that this, they're going to get their foot in the door, thank you to COVID. So, the voucher issue, again, charters and, and like our resolution addresses, the oversaturation. If we have to, if there's going to be a cut in funding, they're going to make sure that, if nothing else, they can keep it to a single, to single digits. I mean, that's all you can aim for at this point. And then, the issue of, of Tasby's voice and other groups like Tasby that the legislature tried to wipe out last time, the advocacy part. So those are the things that they are focusing on right now. I personally have a lot of faith in that group. I think that if we have issues that we can't even begin to anticipate right now, they will be reaching out to Dr. Micah, to us personally. The Legislative Committee of Tasby is a strong group too, with a strong chair. So I think that we'll be okay when it comes to issues that we can't even guess at. Yeah. So.
So, do you think we should submit the resolution with the charter thing? Do you think we should hold off on it?
I do. No, I think we should submit it. I, I have to admit that at first, I was a little frustrated that we could not readdress the issue of resolutions right now. But I do understand too, that if we wrote a resolution right now that was specific to, to something that's going on either as a result of COVID or as a result of what we anticipated, it, it could be useless. So. But still, I kind of wanted us to be able to, to voice something. But I do have, I do have extreme confidence that Tasby will reflect our voices when it comes to issues in Austin, so.
And something I think Ms. Grona knows, but I don't think the rest of you know. TASSA has asked me next year to serve on the advocacy committee. So I will be serving for, on the TASSA board. So, Ms. Caldwell's very excited that I accepted that appointment.
That is great.
She will be up there with me. We'll be doing it together. So, yeah, we'll, we'll be involved in that pretty heavily.
That's really great.
Deb, did you have anything that you wanted to add to this? Or are you kind of agreeing with what we're thinking?
You certainly don't need my agreement.
Well, but you're my G R expert.
I, I would say that the charter saturation issue continues to come up. We, I think, responded to seven different letters, either related to an expansion of existing charter or new operators trying to seek a new charter in Texas. So it's an ongoing issue in Bear County. If you do approve this tonight, the one reason I did come up is, if you approve this tonight, we will make changes to the infographic that accompanies the Tasby resolution. That information is based off of numbers before the passage of House Bill 3. So, if you approve this tonight, Mr. Moy will help me in updating that infographic, or actually, he will just do it. We're so lucky to have Mr. Moy. And, and we'll meet the deadline of next Monday's submission. So if you approve it tonight, I just want you to be aware that what you might have in your packet will be updated with current information to reflect House Bill 3.
Okay.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, when this, when this resolution first came, when we first, when Northeast first brought it to Tasby, two sessions ago? That summer meeting is when we discuss all the resolutions at the Tasby Board Meeting. And I was on the Legislative Committee and really was put, this brought out one of the absolute best discussions we had as a committee and opened the eyes to a lot of districts around the state who may not be as familiar with what charters are doing to us, to, to some districts, to not all districts. So, at first, it was kind of like, oh, this doesn't affect us, so let's not worry about it. Then, when they realized the trickle-down effect it could have on them, it, it became a very important and a very talked-about resolution. And it was even brought to the floor of the General Assembly, so, for discussion. So, we did a really, really great thing on that. So thank you so much, Deb.
Thank you, Deb. Okay, any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing that, do I have a motion to approve the proposed advocacy resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkley. Do I have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Mr. Layos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. Item nine, new business for possible board action. A board policy. One, possible action regarding board policy F D A local intra-district transfers. First reading, Mr. Jimenez.
Thank you. President Grona, members of the board, Dr. Micah, executive staff and guests. We bring the first reading of F D Local pertaining to intra-district transfers, specifically continued enrollment. It is important to note that the district continues to review our policies and procedures through new lenses. And when we can make an adjustment that will benefit our students and our families, we make every effort to move in that direction. I'd like to ask Dr. Brent Rummitt to address this agenda item.
Good evening, President Grona, members of the board, Dr. Micah, executive staff and guests. As you all well know, one of Dr. Micah's priorities as superintendent is an ongoing analysis of student-staff well-being. So F D A, in some small measure, is an attempt for us to address an existing policy in a way that might benefit a greater number of students post-pandemic. As you're aware, Chapter 25 of Texas Education Code authorizes you as a board to decide how you specifically want to address intra-district transfers. So with regard to continued enrollment in particular, the potential revisions for your consideration are essentially twofold. Continued enrollment, as you all recall, is those scenarios where a student registers at a campus with a valid address in that specific attendance area, then moves, you know, either to another attendance area or out of the district altogether, you know, but is permitted to remain on that campus for the duration of that year. The potential revisions, as you've seen, are essentially twofold. Item number one, to give rising 5th and 8th graders the opportunity to finish their elementary and middle school careers respectively at a campus analogous to what's available for seniors right now. And then, item number two, gives Dr. Micah as superintendent the authority to make a determination about what he might consider to be an extenuating circumstance. As he alluded to earlier, one of the probably anticipated consequences of COVID-19 is going to be some mass migration and some increases in student mobility across all demographics, frankly. You know, from students living in very affluent areas because their families have prioritized attendance at that particular campus to our least advantaged students who are dependent on federal funding, you know, that may or may not cease to exist. So in that instance, he would have the authorization to determine what would be an extenuating circumstance, i.e. something that would affect the district's students globally, you know, and wouldn't be isolated to, you know, an individual issue for a specific family. And then, of course, that would potentially liberate principals to make that request prior to the start of an instructional year, unlike the way that the policy's written now. They would, of course, still retain their existing authority to block any potential application or to revoke any application for a behavioral, an academic, an attendance issue as it's reflected in F D A now. So if you have any questions or if I can provide you any clarification, I'm certainly happy to do that.
I want, one question. On some of these policies, a lot of the local policies will have superintendent or designee. Are we entertaining that or is it, for the exceptions? Is that strictly for the superintendent? Or is there somebody that's a proxy within the staff that would be also handling?
It could be Mr. Jimenez. It could be Dr. Byer. I mean, some of them, Mr. Byer, again, I wouldn't get into every single one of them potentially. I think we'll take a look at and kind of make some decisions as a group that says, you don't have to bring each one of these. Because, again, what, what we're really just trying to do is be mindful that students may be in 5th grade, they've attended a school since kindergarten.
Right.
And to no fault of their own, COVID-19 has impacted their family in, in a way that they had to move. We want them to have the option. If they wish to finish that last year, either at their middle school or their elementary, we do this at high school, we've done it for years, is just to allow them to have that closure and not face yet another impact in their life if they, if they, you know, the family can get them there.
I think it's a great, great addition to this, this already-existing policy. And I, I guess my more specific question is, do we need to add some language in there?
I think it says or designee.
Does it? Did I miss that?
Yeah.
Okay.
In, in some places.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay, there it is.
Yeah.
All right. Under factor, then approving superintendent or designee, okay. My mistake, I missed that.
It's okay. Anybody else? Anybody else have any questions or comments for? It's great, right?
You know, you just never know what you need to, how it drains. And this is just another.
Yeah.
Policy that I'm so grateful that you've done the research.
Okay. Did you want to say something? Pulled the mic up. Okay. Thank you, Brent.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of F D A local inter-district transfers as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ols. These masks, I can't.
That was me. Tony moves.
Raise your hand. Okay. Okay, do I have a second?
This is Terry Williams. A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. Item B, resolutions. Possible action regarding waiver of 2020 textbook inventory. Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Micah, executive staff and guests. I call on Jimmy Romano, our textbook coordinator, to cover this resolution.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Micah, executive staff and guests. I stand before you to ask for us to be allowed to apply for a waiver of instructional materials for the 2019-2020 school year. There are several reasons. One being that the children and the teachers were off-campus from prior to spring break up through the summertime. And normally, we audit a third to half the campuses the first two weeks when school lets out. But we were unable to do that this year because the high schools, especially since they issue books, are collecting it even as we speak. And being that as it is, there was no time to perform audits before the end of our fiscal year. And I have to submit that to TEA. Also, materials upon return could be contaminated. And there's a 72-hour wait period when the books are coming back from the homes and the students, teachers. So we wanted a whole 72-hour wait period once they're collected. So again, that hindered our ability to perform the audits. And lastly, the campuses through our textbook software are able to perform self-audits. And I'm monitoring those very closely. And actually, at this point, we've collected about 40 audits from the campuses that I've gone through personally and conferred with the assistant principals. So those are the reasons we're asking to apply for this instructional materials waiver.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
So I have a question. That brought up a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, what you mentioned. So, I mean, surely there are risks in reusing these textbooks that might come back. So what's going to be done with them?
Well, when the textbooks come back, there's a wait period. I believe the CDC has said 72 hours on paper and cardboard. So as long as they're sit untouched through the summer, which normally is the case, we should be okay. Seventy percent, also seventy percent of our materials at the elementary and middle school level are consumable, so we won't ever see again.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, they're workbooks. Also, our Science K8 is online. It's a digital resource called StemScopes. So we have no materials for that other than our online and digital resource.
And so will an inventory then be done once everything is settled before the next school year? Or is it just based on the audits that you've received up to this point?
Well, it's going to be based on the audits that are submitted to me. I'll flag anything that's out of the ordinary. I've got, after six years now, I've got a pretty good idea of losses at middle school, elementary and high school, and generally the type of book that'll go missing. We are buying class sets, so a lot of those books never went home. The AP books are the books that have gone home, and normally, we get those back in abundance.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to waive the instructional materials inventory requirement as permitted by the Texas Education Code 7.056?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item C, instruction in campus administration. One, possible action regarding 2020-2021 seventh-grade reading instrument waiver. Mr. Jarrett.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Micah, executive staff and guests. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Susan Diaz to come to the microphone to address this action item.
Congratulations, Doctor.
Thank you all so much.
It's awesome.
Thank you all. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Micah, executive staff and guests. I too bring a waiver, a COVID-19 waiver, before you all. TEC 20.006 requires each school district to administer at the beginning of the seventh grade a reading instrument adopted by the commissioner to each student whose performance on the Grade 6 Star Reading Assessment did not demonstrate reading proficiency. The commissioner has recently adopted the following instruments: iStation, Raps 360, the Texas Middle School Fluency Assessment, TMSFA, and Woodcock Johnson 3 Diagnostic Reading Battery. LEAs are required to use one of these reading diagnostic instruments. However, because of the disruptions to the 1920 school year and possible disruptions to 2021 school year resulting from COVID-19, districts may request a waiver in order to use another instrument approved by a local district board of trustees in order to best meet student needs in the 2021 school year only. A waiver of the requirement to use an adopted instrument will only be approved for one year and will not be waived in the 2122 school year and beyond. Based on this information, we are requesting a waiver to use the nationally-normed, research-based NWEA MAP that was adopted by NEISD in Proclamation 2018 in lieu of one of the instruments listed by the commissioner. Does anyone have questions?
Does anyone have questions for Doctor? I love it.
So we are asking that the Board of Trustees grant us permission to submit a one-year waiver on behalf of the district to TEA. This waiver will allow us to use MAP in lieu of the instruments approved by the commissioner.
No questions? All right. Yeah, it'll be awesome. Do I have a motion to grant administrative staff permission to submit a one-year waiver on behalf of the district to TEA? The waiver will allow us to use MAP in lieu of the instruments approved by the commissioner.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hasso. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Byer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Diaz. Item two, possible action regarding 2020-2021 180 Student Day District of Innovation School Calendar. Mr. Jarrett, but we have had three people sign up to speak to this issue. So I'm going to read matters from the floor first. The trustees welcome comments from members of the public during this time of the meeting. Generally, board members do not respond to public comments during the meeting, although members may request further information or a future agenda item on a matter raised during public comment. As explained fully in the board's written procedures for this time, the Matters from the Floor portion is a limited public forum. Accordingly, speakers may present on a topic related to district business for up to three minutes but are not permitted to make (1) personal complaints about an individual staff or board member that should be raised using the district's grievance policies; (2) a personnel action; (3) a student disciplinary matter; (4) a complaint about a particular student; (5) or pending litigation. Any person who persists in speaking on these topics after being directed not to do so will lose the remainder of their time to speak and may lose their privilege of addressing the board at future meetings. We also welcome written comments at any time, either through email at board@neisd.net or by mail, care of the superintendent's office at 8961, Torsoro Drive, 6th floor, San Antonio, Texas 78217. Ms. Huey.
Kathy Estrilain. Madam President, before I speak, I would like to hear the administration's presentation. If that would be possible. They may answer my questions.
Okay. Robert Hilliard.
Good evening, President Grona, trustees. Thank you for this time to be in front of y'all. I'm here to speak about the 180-day calendar and the transparency or I would offer the lack of transparency associated with this. Point just taken, we don't know what's actually being briefed. The notice was posted on Friday, was sufficiently vague to create questions. Was this 180-day intercessional calendar? That starts on August 3rd, that the TA is promoting? I don't know. Or is it just a few days early start, a few days late start? Nobody knows. I wanted to see a copy of the calendar and requested it so through the Public Information Officer. And then additionally, I went through Mr. Jarrett as well as Mr. Hasso. I wanted this information, and I believe all of the community is entitled to this public information prior to the meeting. But we could not access it. So I did receive a phone call from Mr. Jarrett. Thank you very much. I do appreciate it. And I got a general assurance. It was a minor thing. We're trying to help the kiddos out, and I'm all for that. Mr. Hasso, thank you for your email saying, just to get a general assurance. But how do I know? The information in the notice was poor, is all I can say is one thing. And I do appreciate that. But if we're going to do a proper transparency, which I hear often from this board, and y'all talk about it all the time, and I'm a big fan of it. I was also told the proposed documents cannot be shared before meetings. I would love for a trustee or any district employee to explain to me why. COMAL ISD and SAA ISD both provide those. I hold in my hand here something from COMAL ISD's board tomorrow. Their information on their budgets and child nutrition and maintenance operations, same things y'all are covering. I realize budget season's busy, but we talk about transparency all the time. So why can't you do something as simple as put a draft watermark on a piece of paper and say, this is a working document. The board hasn't approved it. It's not hard to do. You stood it all the time in my previous career. So I'm asking for consideration. One, add sufficient detail in the notices on particular matters so people know minor change to 180-day policy, add three days. That would have been done. Number two, in the name of transparency, post the agenda and agenda packet with associated briefing slides with the initial notice. Once again, COMAL does, so does SAA ISD. We always talk about being a leader in the city, in the district, in the state. I have heard it often. So this is an opportunity for that to happen. I would encourage you to consider that. So it would give all of us average NEISD community members the information we need when we need it, before votes and meetings. I encourage and challenge each of the board and the trustees, the seven of you that sit in these elected positions from the public, to consider adding to your next agenda meeting for action and change how the information is presented to the NEISD communities that prior to meetings, all this is posted with the notice, agenda, and agenda packet so that we, the constituents, can have that information available. And that would increase transparency, in my opinion, and so we could be more informed so we don't have to make seven phone calls, emails, and texts. While I do appreciate the response, I shouldn't have had to do that as a member of the public. This should be readily available, public trust institution. Thank you very much. Have a blessed evening.
Ricky Ford. Okay. Mr. Jarrett.
Okay.
You're up.
So, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Micah, executive staff and guests. At this time, I'm bringing forward an amended calendar. As you recall, on December 9th of this year, we brought forth a calendar that was approved by the board. Due to COVID and some new opportunities that have been presented to us, we have had some further conversations about how we can amend the calendar to meet the needs of our students. And in our effort to meet the needs of our students, we also were confronted with a new opportunity or idea from the mayor, which is to add a Battle of Flowers holiday to the fall. And so several adjustments have been made to the calendar. But our hope is that we understand that our staff, who will be returning in the fall, made commitments on how their, or what employment they're going to go into. So we're not looking at any other calendar than to make a minor adjustments to some days on the calendar, which I will go through. So the first action that we made to the calendar that we want you to consider is November 13th becoming a Battle of Flowers holiday. We have many students in our district who participate in the Battle of Flowers, and so the amount of attendance will be impacted greatly. And also, we want to value the community and the culture of San Antonio by participating in the Battle of Flowers, as the mayor has requested. The second item is that we had to recognize that many of our students have endured the COVID slide due to not being in school for over three months. In addition to the COVID slide, they're also being confronted with the summer slide, which is another three months of not being in school. And so due to this lack of educational opportunity that our kiddos are experiencing, we had to go and be a little bit more reflective in our practice and look at our calendar to see where maybe we can capture some time and potentially some funding to help mitigate some of these slides that these kiddos are going to go through. So the state of Texas, based on House Bill 3, is allowing districts to obtain half ADA funding for students after 180 days and 75,600 minutes. Once you exceed that, the state will then pay the district a half ADA per student in grades K through 5. These are the students that are in the developmental stages of their life educationally. And so we feel that we wanted to do what was right for our kiddos, and we had to explore all options and consider all options. So based on that, we made some adjustments to the calendar with respect to our students, but also to our teachers as well. Our district allows for three professional development days or workdays. Those days are in October, and in January, and in May. During those days, this is traditionally where our teachers go and get professional development hours, and this is where they work on their craft. In anticipation for the fact that our teachers are going to be confronted with a new normal going into the 2021 school year, we actually provide a professional development the last week of the school year on how to engage students through distance learning. We have started planning on how we can craft around our intentions of helping all of our kids, but also helping our adults. So by asking this, we're asking for an early release day on those days that were traditionally professional development days. This will allow teachers to come, students to come to school in the morning with their teachers and learn, and then the teachers could still continue their professional development or workday in the afternoon. Once that happens, once we exceed four hours, we are considered a full day of ADA. Once you get that full ADA, now you hit the 180 mark. Anything we do above and beyond that for students in K through 5, we receive funding. So for example, our summer school program right now is enrolled, we have 1,850 students that are enrolled in elementary school that are receiving one-to-one device instruction. We are funding these through many different resources. Well, now, with this opportunity, we will be able to fund this through another vehicle, through the state, and then those things can enhance the learning opportunity for our kiddos. And so at this point, when we're making adjustments, we're thinking about long-term effect and less impact. Our teachers, the dates that we're looking at again is October 12th, January 4th, and May 28th. Our teacher contracts would not be adjusted or amended at all. Our teacher contracts are 187 days of what they're contracted for. And we also wanted to make sure that we didn't adjust that because then we're having to call people back in and redo contracts, and that creates a lot of stress on our staff as well. Trying to think if there's something else. And part of our process, and this may help clarify some things, we also brought this to our DEIC committee, which is a committee made up of parents, of staff, and administrators. And we brought this to the entire committee and went over this with them prior to bringing it to the board. Part of that reason for the transparency piece is that we wanted to make sure that teachers were part of that conversation, some parents were part of that conversation, because we didn't want to mislead or misinterpret any information as we provide to the community. And so as we bring it forward to the board, we're asking for an amendment of essentially to allow those three days to be early release so that we can capture ADA for those students that potentially are affected by the COVID slide.
Right, and so it's, this is what's the confusing piece about applying for this allotment. So as you all well know, we have to get 75,600 minutes of schooling every year for our students. We moved away, if you recall, it used to be days, and then it changed to minutes, right? To apply for this allotment, you have to meet both. You have to meet the 75,600 minutes and 180 days of instruction. So you have to do both. And so that's why we've gone about this. As I mentioned earlier to you all, the students that we believe were the most impacted through distance learning are our youngest learners, kinder through fifth. Because especially our K, and there's a lot of our, you know, discussion about K2 versus K3. But those babies, I mean, trying to teach a kindergartner through distance learning is a challenge, right? What this will do is give, provide us the extra money to go ahead and really blanket that out as deep as we need to, or as wide as we need to. And the other important thing to note here, and Mr. Jarrett did speak to it, is there's no contractual adjustment to our teachers. And for those teachers that choose to work, because we can get up to 30 extra days of half-day ADA, for teachers that work that, they would be paid additionally above and beyond their contracted days. So this is not going to be anything that's forced upon them. This will be, just like we do summer school and those types of things, they ask to do it, and then they would be compensated accordingly. That dollar amount, we don't know at this moment because it adjusts on a lot of factors, but, and then where those days fall, again, will be determined based on, because again, we've got to figure out just how much of a slide there actually was, and then figure out where to go. was, and then figure out where to go ahead and adjust accordingly to help them get caught up.
I do have a question. So, under changes, it says seven full workdays, and previously there were 10. How does that affect our staff as far as development? Are they, I assume those 10 days were workdays and mandatory workdays, so what happens to those three days that they're losing?
So, so those days, essentially, we use for professional development. And so that was one of the things that we did in May, not even really recognizing that this was going to be an opportunity, but we did that in May where we were preparing our staff to be prepared for next year, early on. And so they'll still get half of that time back to be able to work on their craft, but it wouldn't be a full day of professional development like they've had in the past. The other reason why we did it this way was, the other option was to take away the two days before Thanksgiving. Families have become more accustomed to having that full week off, and that's where they make family, and teachers, absolutely teachers. And traditionally, that's the time where they spend with family, and so we're kind of in a crossroad, whereas either we take something like that from our teachers and our families, or we try to adjust and modify appropriately so we can still meet the needs of our entire community.
So there's still, there's still seven full workdays that they have where there will be no students in the classroom?
Yes.
The three that they're losing will be half-days because those will be instruction in the morning and then a workday in the afternoon.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So really, they're not losing?
Yeah.
It's a day and a half.
It was a day and a half, yes.
Okay, Ms. Huey.
As I've visited with some of the districts in our area and around the state about this issue, there's a couple of things that came up, and that is that some districts are getting away from early release because of it is a problem for some families. Where do we stand on that issue?
So we provide KENS, remember, at not just the elementary, but the middle level as well. And so there's always that availability to our parents there. And so, you know, again, if there are some, some pieces in there, Sandy, as we'll have to listen to our community as we've done.
Absolutely, yeah.
And try to help them problem solve if that becomes a problem.
Okay. I understand in some of the other communities that they've already reached out to the daycare facilities and stuff like that to help with that, if that's the route they take. The other, the other, as districts are looking at adding these days, is some districts are looking at a longer day, adding 15 minutes to the day?
We've not done that. We do meet the minute requirement, so we have not considered lengthening the school day at this time.
Right. And lengthening the day, again, Sandy, if you remember, we have to meet the 75,600 minutes and the 180 days.
And the 180.
So adding minutes to our calendar wouldn't meet the 180-day requirement.
Have we always been, I know we've always put our professional development at a very high priority. Are we kind of ahead of other districts in that? It seems to me that, I don't hear other districts putting as much into it as we do. Is there a requirement that there's a minimum, and we just exceed that, or we just, I know we're better than most, but it just seems that we...
No, I think it's about continuous improvement, right? I think our effort is intent to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our teachers. And so this year, we were confronted with something that we've never been confronted with, and so we came up with five tenants of learning around distance learning, so that our teachers can be better prepared for next year. And so I think it's all about being intentional, and that's kind of what we've been.
And just, so, summer school began?
Last week.
Last week. So Mr. Jarrett today sent me a piece from one of our sites. It is amazing to see distance learning when it began versus where we are today, all based on those five tenants, and then the training that they've been providing already, how much more, how much we've adapted to it, and how much better our staff has gotten at it. It's super impressive. In fact, I need to send it to you all for you to click through, because it blew me away. And I went over and spoke to Mr. Jarrett about it and said, wow, this is incredible. And Mr. Jarrett, in his typical fashion, is like, well, we're getting there. We're getting there. And I said, it's just so, and he said, yeah, we're really working hard with, with teachers and with our staff on, on making sure that we're meeting that demand and meeting that need.
And I just want to say too, thank you for recognizing the COVID slide on top of the summer slide.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we've heard the commissioner say that quite a bit, and that, that is a huge factor that's being recognized right now, is that bless our incredible teachers and what they'll be facing when we get back to school. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add on to Ms. Huey's commendations or recommend, or, can't even think of it. Anyway, thank you, staff, for working through this, and to the DEIC for looking at this and trying to shuffle this around and not creating additional burdens on families and teachers that, that are way above and beyond what everybody's experiencing. And I know that there were some rumors spreading around, some misinformation, and I understand that our agenda item, as posted, was not 100% clear. So to the thousands of people watching and you here, you know, we hope to look at that and see what we can do better. But what I don't understand is how a line on an agenda, even though it didn't say exactly what it was, it somehow got out that it was completely, somebody came up with something that wasn't on the table. And I know it wasn't in the agenda, but then it got perpetuated and thrown about. And I do want to thank the couple, or a handful of people that emailed me directly through my board email to get clarification before they perpetuated that rumor and that misinformation. So I know it wasn't 100% clear on the agenda, and again, I think we need to, we owe it to, to the community to look at those things. But then to pick something and then just run with it, I think was a disservice to everybody.
It's irresponsible.
It was. And the first person that did that, if they called or emailed, I think we could have given them the information. So I'm sort of speaking in a vacuum here, but.
Well, it's okay, because it, I mean, it turned into we were going to year-round school.
Correct, correct. And so for those people that reached out and emailed and tried to get clarification, thank you to those people that did that. And we want to try to be better at that as a board, so. That's all.
Okay.
I have some, I have a, I just need some clarification on the, on the calendar here. So can someone, I mean, maybe you have already, but I just need to hear it again. So the early dismissals, the ones that are in green that say 180, can someone explain that to me versus the other one? I think I understand it, but I just need to...
So, so the ones in green were originally days for staff workday and student holiday. Those now have turned into a student school day, but as an early release, so that teachers can at least get some of their professional learning done in lieu of a full day of staff development.
Thank you.
I think the 180 was to kind of clue us in that that was...
Yeah, that's where it was getting me, yeah. Thanks, thank you.
No problem.
And we no longer have President's Day, correct?
No. That has now moved to our new...
To the Battle of Flowers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it.
But we do have two Battle of Flowers days.
Yes, ma'am. We're going to have two Battle of Flowers. That's correct.
April of 2021 and November of 2020.
And that's assuming they can have it in November, too.
Right.
Who knows, yeah.
Okay, do any board members have any, all right, Ms. Esterline? Oh, I'm sorry. I shouldn't let you call.
All right. Good evening, Ms. Grunna, members of the board, Dr. Micah. My name is Patsy Esterline, 6800 Park 10 Boulevard, Suite 123 North, 78213, and I'm the president of the Northeast AFT. AFT would like to address the extension of the calendar to 180 student days. We are in opposition to this extension. We will be going back to another school year different than any before, in which stress levels likely will be high. Just adding three and a half days does not mean an increase in the student's education. Stress and added challenges cause exhaustion, resulting in lower productivity. Will there be a benefit? We're not sure. As a former middle school teacher, I know when we had half-days, we had 20-minute classes. Trust me, you get hardly anything done in 20 minutes, except taking the roll and trying to pick up homework or hand out a new assignment. So I doubt that there's going to be that much direct instruction going on. Should you decide to move forward with adding extra three and a half days, then teachers and support personnel should receive their daily rate for each of those three days. Because even though they're going to get the afternoon for professional development, they're still going to have to come up with a lesson plan and something to do in that morning for those, those three days. Also regarding the reopening of the next school year, Northeast AFT asks to be a part of the planning process. Teachers and support personnel must be in the discussion to alive fears which abound, as well as to provide insights that may be missed by the administration. Right now, no one knows what we'll be facing, but we want and need to be a part of the planning for the various contingencies that may occur. Thank you.
Ricky Ford.
Hi, Ricky Ford, 14322 Chimney House, and I haven't spoken in front of this board in a while. I've been coming to board meetings 31 years this month, or, yeah, this month. And I want to thank you for everything that you do. I know the calendar. I know there's normally a big committee on that, and it usually is put out ahead of time, but with COVID, some things had to be done. I appreciate that they went to the district DEIC committee, which I'm on that, but I missed that meeting. But they did go out and they did try to get input. I have interacted with the board over the last 30 years, and I've gotten to know all of them. And I knew Terry and Tony through the SEBAC committee, and of course, Sandy, Shannon, and Sandy are all PTA members prior to being on the board. And I have to say, in my 30 years, Sandy is probably the best board member we've ever had. I mean, and I can say that unequivocally, not because she's my board member, but because she has worked harder than anybody that I've seen through the years. I've seen a lot of people get on because of one issue, and they get on for one or two terms, and then they get off. Sandy has committed her life to this district. Now, I appreciate that. And I know we've got a lot of associates that are new, and I know the last meeting I went to, I walked up to Anthony Jarrett, and I'm like, who are you? I don't know you. He's like, what? So I made a point to know all of them. They all know me, because I am very vocal. I've never had trouble getting information from the board and from the district, because I have been very vocal. And I just want to thank you for everything that you've done. So, and hopefully, everybody else will, if they want to get involved, they will get involved and put the money where their mouth is. I mean, I've served on the SEBAC committee for, since 2003. I've been on every bond committee since 1990. And so I've actually worked with these people and not just come and, I do come and complain, but I have worked with these people. And I know, and they all know me. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do I, oh, wait, I'm sorry.
So, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ignore you.
I know, but I'm going to, I'm going to jump in, Mrs. Grunna. So, you know, the confusion, Mr. Byer, you know, so back, if you'll recall, a few weeks ago, the mayor had invited me to participate in one of his daily briefings. And during that, in fact, I stated very publicly that I would not change the calendar dramatically as the commissioner was recommending without going out to the public. Something like that demands that you go to the public and that you ask their opinion, because shifting to a year-round calendar is a huge shift. And so we made, I made that statement that day. Ms. Chancellor also had been interviewed several times and very publicly stated, we would not do it. And so, you know, I don't know exactly where that rumor began, but moving forward, I heard you, and, and, you know, we'll work on trying to make sure that things are as, as open as they can be. But we were never going to go out there without going through the proper channels. In fact, this, as I sit on these calls with various groups around, even with the commissioner, there are districts that have just unilaterally gone out and not even gone through DEIC or anything. We have a very robust process for calendar that, that we remain committed to. And so we're always going to seek some input out there. And in this case, we use the DEIC, which, you know, there are business members, there are community members, there are parents, or parents, teachers, different staff, that we wanted...
There's even students on that committee.
We wanted to make certain that, that they understood the why behind what we're doing. And so, you know, with that, you know, it's a shame that it got like that. That was never our intent. And again, I never wanted to go out and ever do anything without our community's input when it comes to calendar, especially something like that. Because, again, our parents in our community, and I know this, I live in it, you know, my wife plans trips well in advance, and doing something like that would upheave people's lives. And not just that, but you look at things like childcare. Are your childcare facilities going to be open during those times? Because, you know, a lot of times, they just kind of mirror the school's calendars, and they close during it. And so that was never, ever on the table. We were never looking at a year-round calendar. So I just want you to know that.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the 2020-2021 proposed 180-day school calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Layos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. Item D, consent. One, instruction and campus administration. A, TEA missed school day waiver. Two, business services. A, bid items. B, 2019-2020 cooperative purchasing contracts report. C, annual over 50,000 purchases. D, over 50,000 purchases. Three, operations. A, 2016 hail damage program, Madison High School central plant building, re-roofing and roof-related work project bid authorization approval. B, professional services contracts, construction contracts, and related contract amendments supporting the 2015 bond design and construction requirements. Four, minutes from May 2020. Five, into consent. Do I have a board member wishing to pull an item from consent? Okay, do I have a motion to approve consent? Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't say anything.
This is Terry Williams. Had to turn my mic on. The, I have a question, so I'd like to pull the annual over 50,000 purchases.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? All right. So do I have a motion to approve consent without item 2C?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Byer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. Okay, Ms. Williams?
So, let's see. There's an item, and maybe it's self-explanatory, I'm not sure, but it just seems a lot. American Express wire, it's about 24,718,231. You see that?
On page 219.
Two of 19.
Two of 19.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Guess that's, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Williams, first let me explain to y'all what the annual over $50,000 purchase list is. Board policy CH Local requires that we bring any single purchase of $50,000 or more to the board for approval, and it doesn't matter if it's on a bid or purchasing co-op, we have to bring that to the board for approval. So what we do, to keep from bringing, you see 19 pages of over $50,000, that could be multiple times. So what we do is, we bring those to you, and basically, you're preapproving, if we have, it's not saying that we're going to spend this money with the different vendors. What we do is, we pull a report of what we have spent with vendors for the past year, and then we bring that amount to you to preapprove for the next year. It doesn't mean that we're going to spend that. There's some bond projects where we did spend with certain architects and construction companies that we won't spend next year. It just happened to come out on the report. What, Ms. Williams, what you're talking about, the 24 million American Express, what we do is, that is the payments that we make to American Express when we use our P-card. So that is the payments that accounts payable pays when we reconcile our P-card each month. That's the amount of spend that we've actually had on our P-card.
And we, oh, go ahead.
So it comes out of the budgeted funds of all the campuses and departments, but that's what we pay to American Express. what we pay to American Express because they prepay those P-card purchases.
And we get a rebate off of those purchases, so we try to steer things into our P-card purchases, so the more we spend through American Express, the more we get back. And I think Dave was just telling me today or the other day that we're getting like $189,000 back on rebates because we used American Express.
Does that answer your question?
No, and I understand, you know, about annual contracts, I worked in that area for a long time, but thanks for the explanation. And, you know, P-card, at work, we call them ProCard, same thing. We use MasterCard. But, yeah, so it, I didn't want to assume that that's what it was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to approve item D to C?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Winkley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item 10 reports, a financial statement review of expenditures that's been provided to you. B, awarded bid report. 11 matters from the floor we've taken care of. 12, discussion and possible action regarding Board members' request for items to be placed on a future agenda and/or requests for reports from the administration. Do I have a Board member wishing for anything? Seeing none. Item 13, adjournment, the time is 8:53. Thank you.